This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anita would appreciate you all the announcement.
Please take notice that the Lake Plaza Village Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 6, 2022, at 4:30 PM in the main floor meeting room at North Elbitown Hall, 2693 Main Street, Lake Plaza, New York, concerning the following short-term rental moratorium variance application. Andrea and Louis Iacovidis, ALI Ventures LLC, for a property located at 2177 Saranack Avenue, tax map number 42.125-2-8.000. The public is invited to attend in person or online. There will be a go-to meeting log and provided on the Village website by end-of-day Friday, June 3, 2022, at villageoflakeplaceta.ny.gov. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. Signed, Anita Anthony Eskling, Village Clerk.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would you like to come up here, stay there, you go anywhere you like? What's the easiest way?
I think Jordan's at the table probably appropriate.
Because now you'll be living in Village relative to the 14,000.
Should I just introduce myself?
Sure.
Sure. So I'm Andrea Iacovidis. Louis is my brother. And we formed the company in September called ALI Ventures LLC. And our company is, we purchased the property at 2177 Saranack Avenue. It is a mixed-use property. There is a commercial space. There are four units in addition to that. One of them has a long-term tenant. And then the other loans are under renovation. We had to, how much of this should I just go through? Should I just kind of like give you?
Yeah, we're working on that.
Go ahead. So we knew going into and purchasing the property that we were going to have to do some light renovations. We also knew that there was a gentleman in there that we would probably be going through an eviction process. And unfortunately, we did have to do that. So we purchased the property. We had an inspection, all that good stuff. After we got in there, our contractor changed, took a look, had a concern, and we did some floor for a demo, discovered some fire damage that was not disclosed to us prior to purchase. That fire damage unfortunately has, can you check this out? Has left two of our units unable to run because we had to do more renovations than expected. And the same thing with the eviction. What happened, the state that we took over that apartment was to the point that we really had to do big extensive renovations there. What else can I tell you as far as how the moratorium has affected us? We, when we took over the building, we really thought one unit, we would just flip right away and we would start to be able to generate income right away from that one unit.
When you say flip, you don't mean selling the apartment?
Certainly, exactly. Do some light improvements to it, paint, put a little facelift, maybe change a couple of appliances. And that's going to be it. So within three weeks, we were hoping to have that work done and then be able to, you know, go upstairs to Mike and say, hey, Mike, come check this out. And we'd go ahead and move forward with it. But that's not what happened because when we did that exploratory demo, we found that the beam in the ceiling of the lower unit, which is the floor of the upper unit, had structural damage to it. So we had to bring in an architect, an engineer, excuse me, to take a look at it and have his report come through. And then we had to actually fix that for the safety of the building and everyone else in the unit.
So may I ask, and I think it might, it might help direct the conversation. So one of the like financial hardship, could you go into how much you are comfortable with it? Like how that is, yeah, how like what is the, how is this created a financial hardship as far as the amount of money you've put in versus what you have anticipated and so on and so forth? On top of with the initial investment?
Good. On the eviction side, if you'd like to learn more about that, I would say maybe talk to the judge or you can call him at Oracle's office. I don't feel comfortable talking about that.
No, I don't think that would be okay.
As far as the renovations, the income that would have been generated. So the loss due to the fire damage with inspection, labor, loss of income would probably have been about between $40,000 and $50,000. And then as far as the moratorium is concerned, the summer, the extended summer loss would probably be about $20,000 to $30,000. So that takes us about, you know, between $70,000 and $80,000.
Well, so I guess the revenue, the one part is, so the initial investment and then then you like the addition, how much was that? And then?
How much did we purchase?
Then the additional cost on top of that, all the renovations.
Got it. Got it.
That were unplanned, so it's kind of.
Got it.
Put you in a situation where it's much dire than normal.
Got it. So we purchased property before the 20,000. We were expecting to put in about $100,000 in renovations. And just different startup costs and things like that that are associated with the buying of property. And the anticipated is probably we're going to put in between $200,000 and $250,000.
Okay.
Which.
To a downside.
And for us, it's pretty significant. This is, you know, Lou rents in town, you know, he's a renter. This isn't a second home or anything for us. I'm living at a friend's place right now, not paying rent, so.
This maybe is off the topic, but when you buy real estate and they don't disclose something, maybe you can't get into that. Does people that sold it to you have any repercussions of not disclosing the fact? Or was it before the, you bought it from, that the fire damage occurred?
That's something that I, being a person I'm aware, I'm learning about. I don't know enough about it to say whether or not, that they have any reports for us.
It'll be interesting. I'm sure you should at least ask that question.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And that is something that I do want to learn about because it puts people in a situation which is really challenging. So, and there are forms that sellers do, you know, there are things you do have to disclose, so.
So when you're all done, your intention is kind of a place for you to live on the property and place a long-term renter to short-term in the business?
Correct, yep.
It's a big building, I assume. Or else you've got really small apartments, one of the two.
Yeah, there is, some of them are 550 square feet. I think the biggest one is 750, 800 square feet. So they're not large units. But, you know, for, for somebody to come and live in or a couple. And our renter is staying on. She's, she's pretty happy there. She's happy with improvements to the building and safety and stuff.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No. I think I'm good too.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, boss?
I don't, I don't. I appreciate you, you know, taking the time to listen to us and allow us to, you know, present this to you. If anything comes up, you know.
If we have any questions, we obviously have your comments.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, guys.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Remember that's hot up here. It's like snow. Well, but no one else can, I mean, other people can make comments, but they're, I don't think they can be tracked to that. Okay.
Okay.
And there it is.
Okay, very good.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else who would like to make a comment at this public hearing? Don't we have anyone speaking? We have one in person, or do you like? Okay. Okay. Anything else we should discuss?
Uh, no.
Janet, or are we good?
I think Janet directed me before that when everyone's done speaking, we can close the public meeting and open. Well, actually, we're 20 minutes early, so we can't open our board meeting yet.
Hello, Peter.
Hi.
Hi. Two minutes too late to ask any questions, but.
So sorry.
Okay, in that case, then we will close the public hearing. Yeah, we could have combined the two. We would have been just about right time-wise.
I'm going to leave the recording on because it'll screw up if I turn it off and start it again.
Okay. You jumped to our executive session, but I guess you can't.
Ask again, I was just muting the microphone.
Janet, can we go into our executive session before the board meeting?
No.
Okay, it's worth a try.
I don't know why my camera isn't working. Or can you see me?
No, just your initials.
I don't know why that's, I can see it in the preview, but it's not showing. But no, no, the executive session is within the context, if you will, confines of your meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything you could read to us?
No.
Yeah, we're gonna try there too.
We're going to mute ourselves for now and come back on at 5:00.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, didn't know if you're muted in there. When we came to the approval of the marathon for Greg Morris and Larry.
Yeah, you were, you were chatting with Karen.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
We are muted, yes.
Well, we are, but you might want to unmute her.
Janet?
Uh, Miss Yvonne.
No.
I show, I showed that meeting that you just talked about on Wednesday morning. Is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
You could be right. I can't look at my calendar right now with WebEx on.
Okay, very good. Maybe I can find it here.
I didn't see one.
Do you remember, Jackie?
What?
You're on.
It's Wednesday at 9:00.
She hasn't missed a thing today. What'd you do over the weekend? Stayed on holiday and expressed?
No, you know, I juggle like this all the time.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your wife?
Yeah. Who I found.
And I do, I do plan on attending the firm and this meeting at, you know.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I have, so in case you don't, if you have other things you have to do, if you want to come, either way.
You want a little bit of vacation? Aren't you semi-retired?
I am.
You wouldn't know it.
Oh, the word, do you end up working more when you semi-retire or how does that occur?
Yes. It does happen.
5:00, you know. Yeah. Okay, so we don't have to do a pledge already, but.
You have to.
It'll be the third time. Okay, so this time, we'll open up to regular meetings. Let's start with court documents. We have AFA's public hearing, a regular board meeting, so hopefully you. Hopefully you all have a chance to read them. Any corrections or errors? Let's go to a motion to accept them. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Anita. Custer Service Agreement Waste Water Treatment Plan.
So moved.
Sorry. All in favor? Memorandum of Agreement with Unions. All five. My understanding is everyone but the police has finished on that.
The police is signing, but I just got a hold of Jesse. That would be clear as well.
Okay. And everyone's familiar with that? Any questions on that or it's been a long time?
Well, I know. And not that this would sway anything, but you had said ARPA money was coming in July, but yet we're paying out in June.
We received the previous ARPA funds?
Yeah.
So a portion of those funds were utilized for loss revenues and a portion will go through as well.
So, but the ARPA funds were in two payments. We got one last year and we're going to get another one. So is there any ARPA money left from the first payment?
Yes.
Enough to cover?
Which has been, yes. We had to put out to Treasury that we were going to utilize it because we received under $10 million. And that was the cutoff. It just has to be utilized for anything COVID-related. So.
Then what are we using the second payment for?
The increase in the longevity, which is the second half of the MOA.
Okay.
And the remainder will be, it will supplement the lost, the remaining loss revenues from the prior year that didn't carry over.
I guess I would feel better if we waited until the second payment came in. But if Mindy's saying.
Well, we can also temporarily take it out of fund balance. Couldn't we replace it?
Yeah, replace that way.
I mean, it isn't like we're not going to have money to.
There's enough money to cover it.
Yeah.
So we got $231,000, correct?
No, $268,000 total.
Okay. And total?
Total.
Total. That's what we're, that's what to do to us and we're waiting for the second payment.
Correct.
So we got $134,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would approve each one of these separately.
Okay, each union?
Yes.
Okay. Can you read off the?
The first one is IBEW.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved to test the MOU.
IBEW.
For IBEW. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second?
Second one is Teaster's Local 687.
So moved.
What do you say? Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Third is CSCA Local 1,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lastly, not least?
Lake Classic Professional Firefighters Association Local 4608.
So moved. Start then.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you want to do the police department? Can we do the police department knowing that they're going to sign it?
Should we say pending their signature?
Janet, can we have the police department in on this even though they haven't signed it till the season? Just say pending their approval?
Janet?
Yes. If you can approve it as presented.
Pending their signing.
Then they've got to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So moved. With what?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Item D, Memorandum of Agreement with the CSCA. You're all familiar with that. That's for four 10-hour days. Any discussion or?
Need to find out when the end date is.
Wasn't that when the union contract?
He texted Brad, he, there's one's fault, so I haven't heard back from him yet.
Wasn't that supposed to go until the next union contract?
Yes, but so it's only for the summer period. It's a work 10-hour days. So Peter's question is why is the end of the summer period?
Okay.
Is it the end of Labor Day or the end of September? However, that will please.
Okay, so again, back to Janet. Can we approve that pending getting a closing or an ending date from Brad, knowing it's going to be the end of the summer, whatever he calls the end of the summer?
I would not do that because I think that's something that would have to go back as a definition to the union.
I'll move to the left. I mean, the agreement says it's up to Brad.
Let's move on to the next item.
Usually the end of summer is considered Labor Day, but I don't know what they're considering in the context of.
Okay, let's quickly jump down to G. You're all familiar with David Giannino and also Kimball is here. This is for the Lake Classic Fiber Pole Attachment Request. Does anyone have any questions on that? As you know, it's been in the works for a long time. It's finally coming to fruition.
I think we need Mindy back because, or maybe Mr. Giannino can answer the question. I know that we were looking for an insurability bond. I did notice that on the certificate of insurance that he provided, our official name is incorrect. That can be corrected easily, but we were also looking for the surety. And I'm not, as of last week, we had not received it.
So that had been forwarded to Mindy, the treasurer and.
The surety representative.
I know.
Wednesday or Thursday?
I got the liability on Wednesday or Thursday.
But he chosen a certificate on the pole bond. With a $10,000 in it.
Oh, that was that form I gave to you.
I believe that was.
That I got.
That has all three. That has the liability. Auto liability, commercial general liability, and pole bond surety.
Okay.
Do you want to raise from $1,000 and $10,000?
I'm not aware that the, that they can do a surety bond. Usually we get the actual bond from the bonding company in a typical situation. And it's, I've never seen it. Doesn't mean it can't happen in a certificate of liability insurance. It's an actual surety. And I want to make sure that's clear, which would mean that in the event something happens and you can't complete the work or you complete it in a way that's not satisfactory, the surety steps in and can actually hire a company to, to complete the work.
Correct.
And I'm not sure.
Janet, I just emailed you a name.
Never seen it, I've never seen it like this. Doesn't mean I can't. And Mindy, our name is wrong on the certificate.
Okay.
But just like some clarification that this is a true, I got that last week, that this is a true surety. It's usually a separate document from a bond company.
And I think that's what threw me. That's why I thought it was still viability coverage because normally you have secondary form.
Okay, well, this is the Hearn Agency, who's my insurance agent, the ones who set that up and sent it to you, just a certificate.
Yeah, I got it.
If Morris muted on that, I've never received anything more. They've held the documents because I've never had to provide it to anybody before. Just a certificate that's, it's active. So I can get any information.
I think we just need to talk to the Hearn Agency and understand that this is a true surety bond. Usually you have to buy the bond, which says you are bonded so that if you don't, and usually it's, I understand from contractors, it's a fairly lengthy, sometimes aris application that you have to make showing that you are, you have a good track record in finishing your work. So I think we just need to confirm this is truly a surety bond.
Okay, so this is specifically for a pole bond, for utility to attach to poles. So it is specific for that.
Correct.
But we can get, I can get that.
Okay, that's fine.
As far as the certificate holder, you said the name was, I have Village of Lake Bassett?
Lake Classic Village.
Lake Classic Village?
Village, comma, in.
I can have that correct.
Okay, so at this point Janet provided that Mr. Giannino can provide us with a secure, a surety bond. Can we approve his application pending that document being either qualified or supplied?
Yes, I could say that Kimball and I have been through this process. It's been quite lengthy. I apologize, Mr. Giannino. We've reached out to some other experts. We have, we have come up with a pole attachment agreement that amends prior pole attachment agreements to reflect what might be seen or what might be coming down the road as increased demand for people or entities to attach to our poles. And also we have revised the schedule of what used to be called, I think it still is, Kimball, is it? Make-ready work to bring everything up into more recent standards and ways of doing business. So unless Kimball has anything to say, I can tell you we've been at this for quite a long time.
So can be. Okay, do I have any motion to?
I just got one question from Kimball is the $20 pole attachment, 12 plus eight?
It's not 12 plus eight.
It's not?
E is for like a slice box. And the $12 is?
For the attachment.
Is for the actual pole.
The other would be an apparatus.
So where does that numbers come from?
Well, I felt was fair and no one disputed it, so.
On the older, the other contracts, I think.
And slightly.
They were 10.
It might be a little bit.
They were 10 and.
Yeah, I mean, the deal with the all should, you know, when it's a function, it should come the same. I mean, if that's the case, and I mean, I can definitely buy it.
So are we overturning? Mindy, you know what the current rates are for slick and dang, slick, finger leads?
So it's $11.98 for the attachment, which is the standard rate plus. Yeah, so $12. And then that's the full rate plus the apparatus or the connection, which is five.
No, that's.
Or that all combined in one. It's like an $11.98.
The aperture is a cable box. Go down Central Road, you'll see a bunch of them.
Okay, so it's $11.98 for the connection and then it's a three or 3% increase annually. Some of our contracts are 5% increase annually. Verizon's totally different. We go off the Hindi women for Verizon, but we're trying to make them all as uniform as possible. But the last one I did was $11.98 per attachment with 3% annual increase.
I mean, I'd just like to see all the fiber of 2% because they're all doing the same thing.
And finger leads, charter, spectrum, slick and dang R. So they all pay the same amount. The only one that's an oddball is Verizon.
And this, this agreement is, and Mr. Giannino's proposal is for service on the Lodge Road and on a section of McKinley Street.
For now. Yes, for now. Any more questions?
What do we want to do about the rate if it's not the same as ours? You want to raise it?
It sounds like it is.
Okay, so what is the first motion?
Verify vicinity that it actually is, but points work many to seven.
Yeah, it's $11.98. The only one that was odd prior was the old contract with charter, which we corrected. So they're all $11.98 and then an annual increase on top of it.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Years later.
Okay, and did you get hold of Brad?
I did, and I got an end date. I think we're starting the 10-hour days this coming Monday, the 10th, and they will end on late day.
Okay. Score one for Janet.
13.
Oh.
What's that?
Next month, I said 13.
All right.
I originally said Friday, so maybe Friday.
Well, Friday was. I'm texting my husband. Next agenda item and I'll be, I'll be on it after that.
All right, we're just going to skip around. We're not doing that.
That's right.
Let's work on that.
Pick a number.
Item E. We finally have two traffic control hires, one part-time, one full-time. Could you give us the information on the names and their starting rate?
Catherine Valentine is the full-time, Michael Lieutenant is the part-time. But the rate is determined by the current CSCA collective bargaining terms. We're not on the specific rate in the year.
Can we do both of them at the same time?
I think so.
Second.
All in favor?
Right. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mayor, you make the appointments and then the board approves the appointments.
I would like to make the appointment to hire.
No, you make the appointment of Catherine Valentine as a full-time, was it traffic?
Traffic Control Officer.
Traffic Control Officer. You make that appointment, then there's a motion to approve or disapprove it.
Okay, so for Catherine Valentine, who is the full-time, right?
Yes.
And make that appointment?
Sold. Second.
Is that a roll call or do we, can we just?
No, no, that's just a straight vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now you would make the appointment of Mr. Bouton as the part-time traffic control officer at the rate as set forth in the bargaining unit contract.
Okay, so that's for Mr. Bouton to be part-time as in our bargaining contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was easy. How are you doing? Keep going. Mindy, you still?
Yeah, I'm good. So start will be June 13th, ending on September 5th.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and also we have tonight the accounting administrative support hire. Once again, do I need, I guess, appointment that's for Emily Eckert. And she will be starting Wednesday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Any questions?
You make the appointment at the, whatever the salary is.
$47,000 annual.
$47,000 annual. Any questions or a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Okay, let's see. Bring this down to Georgia Jones linked to a request. I assume at this point, everything's been satisfied if I'm not mistaken. Brad's happy, Doris going. I think Georgia did a great job of crossing every T, dotting every I, and answering every question we had.
Corde Sylve said there's no problem. It's temporary structure, putting it against the fence.
Okay. And the APA was fine with that.
I spoke with the APA directly and yes, there's no setback necessary because of the size of the structure.
No one would know how much work goes into a little tiny structure like that.
Did anyone say a sketch?
Not a lot.
No, whatever we had last time.
Yeah.
Mayor, is this going to be like the donation of the kiosks and the shelters for the buses?
Yes.
Where somebody or an organization? Where somebody or an organization donates them, and they become the property of the village? And it's our responsibility to take care of them, and if they become uh, unsightly, or inappropriate, or no longer useful, we can remove them? Is there, is there going to be an agreement like that? I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting when um, Georgia presented her proposal. But, you know, we do have precedence for these kinds of things. Uh, like I just mentioned, the kiosks and the, um, and the bus shelters. And I think we probably ought to have a similar agreement with regard to this uh, structure.
Okay, yeah, that was my understanding, but yes, let's make that part of the motion, then we'll make sure we have that agreement before.
Can you get on the agreement?
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, and then Tony Montefiore is retiring on June 24th and 25th at the meeting. Well, he's been servicing MEA for how long?
As long as I can, as long as I can play in the village.
Yeah. I'm sure he'll be missed. Um, and at this point, I guess we're looking for approval for Kimball to go down, show our respects at his retirement party. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good.
Good man. Okay, and J is for hanging up PNM hockey flags. Any questions there for a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Fourth of July Parade? And fireworks, you're something, you'll be later.
Oh, so moved. Well, under discussion, Jackie, did you want to do something different, like drones for the parade instead, or?
No.
Not have apple eyes, the, you know, the unique sort of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and L, I would like to table that until their workshop. If I could have a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Anita, did you have anything else to come?
Uh, yes, we had a few last-minute items come in. Um, I handed out to all the board, Brad has requested two hires for his open labor positions, Cooper Brady and John Ledwin. You all saw the applications. I guess Art needs to make a motion.
Okay, and like, we'll do those separately again.
Yes, those would be appointments and reminder that though, all appointments are probationary.
Six months. Okay, so let's start with um, Cooper Brady, and as Janet said, they will be probationary for six months. And that salary I'm sure is via the contract.
Yes.
That, that amount is?
All I have here is that it's a CCA contract, I'll remember the title.
Okay, okay, so via the contract, um, any questions, or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then the second one, appointment was for John Ledwin. Once again, probation, probationary, and then via the contract, we're starting salary. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So you're, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. You, you said you had two, are they?
Yeah, uh, yeah, there's a couple more. Um, the next one is the electric department. Promotion of Justin Jordan to first-class lineman. And Kimball, since he's here, wants to speak to that at all?
Sure, that's, that's, he is eligible, right?
He's eligible on the 19th of June.
Okay, so that'll be before the next board meeting, so our motion would be pending him being eligible on the 19th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, um, the, we got a request today from High Peak Cyclopes for their annual mini try season, which they would like to start on June 27th. Uh, the mayor got a last-minute okay from the chief that it is fine with the police department, so Howard is asking if it is fine with the board.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes as well.
And here's the final thing, uh, no move, but just an announcement that uh, there will be a special meeting on June 14th prior to the start of the uh, work session at 3:30 to discuss and mode on the two variance applications that were heard on May 16th. And there will be official public notice, but this can be considered the first notice of that.
Say that again? When is it? Is happening at 3:30 or prior to 3:30?
Yes, yeah, at 3:30, just prior to the meeting, the meeting will follow.
Okay. Anything else?
That is all.
Very good. And under treasure items, we have warrant affidavit number 20. Got you reviewed it for us. Thank you very much, thank you. Comes. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else from treasury?
Um, just that I handed out tentative budget to all you, so you can review it prior to the next work session.
Excuse me?
I handed out tentative budget to all of you, so you can review it prior to the next work session.
And, and Mindy, I know you know that if the board does not pass a budget by the end of this month, the tentative budget becomes the budget.
Yes, so the plan is to review it next work session and approve it on the 20th, which is generally earlier than we normally do.
Very early.
Oh yeah, usually there's a special meeting on, at midnight on June 30th.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a jump on it.
I still want to sign that.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Okay, um, thank you. So the next item we have under new business is to set a public hearing for the new local law, the mirror-like regulations, that everyone's been working diligently on. And I believe our intent was to have it before the next board meeting in two weeks. Is that right?
Um, right, that day at the start of the board meeting.
What is, at start of?
Uh, the, yeah, so June 20th at 5, we can start off the board meeting with that.
Everyone's agreeable with that?
And Janet, do we also need a public hearing for the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that same day, we can.
So, and I, they cannot be, as part of the meeting, they would have to be a separate start time before the meeting. It's a public hearing.
4:30.
Yeah, 4:30.
Okay. So should we do that at 4:30, then the local law at 4:45, then our?
Yeah.
And things go longer and longer, okay. Okay, we don't, we just need to set that.
Anita, the budget has to be available to be viewed.
Yep, Anita got it, and we'll post the tentative on the website. And then when the final budget is approved, that'll get posted on the website as well.
Very good. Okay, anything else under new business? Anything under old business? I wish I could help update what's going on on Name Street, but I was gone all weekend, and other than the broken water line, that's all I saw. Okay, and then under mayor items, the emergency department has special hours for the summer. Would you like to read those, or in or?
Sure, they put out one set, but then they revised them. So for July 4th weekend, um, the Saturday, Sunday, and Monday will all be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. For Ironman weekend, the, the Saturday, which is July 23rd, it's uh, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Then from Sunday, the 24th, it opens at 5:00 AM for 24 hours. And then on Monday, the 25th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM again. But we'll post this on our Facebook page and the, the website.
Very good. And Saratoga Race Day is coming up again on August 20th. Is there anyone that would like to go with that?
I'd like to go at some point.
Do you want to go this year?
I never, I never had to go. Well, I don't, I'm not a person of some sort.
Do you want to go?
I'd like to go.
Are you gonna go this year?
Sure.
Okay. Because if you didn't, I'd go.
Okay, well, we don't have to set it. We just, at least mentioning it's there. You guys can talk Scott and, and we'll go from there.
I'd go next year.
You wish, I'll go.
Well, I'm not allowed to go.
Next year. Yeah, you should go.
Ten years, never allowed. Apparently I embarrass everyone.
You were, you, you said you'd go one year, then you couldn't go. I remember that.
I remember this one. There, there were two spots.
Okay, um, anything under commissioner report?
Um, the RFP for the comprehensive plan is ready, and the town board is having their lawyer look at it. Do you want to see it, Janet?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, both the town and the village have agreed to contribute $15,000. So I'll get you a copy of the RFP. At the next board meeting, we need to talk about the doc. Not board meeting, the work session.
Okay.
When Brad's, when Brad's there, um, we gotta make a decision.
Okay.
And there was, did, did you see the letter from Amy Quinn?
Uh, no, I was thinking of this.
It's about Trillium.
It's about Trillium, which, yeah.
Oh, I, yeah, I talked with her on that. She seemed very happy. Last night I talked to her. Was there something more?
Thursday or Friday? When did the letter come? Thursday?
Was it on her, she, she emailed me, and I, I mentioned it to Brad, and the problem is, is that it's temporary, what we had out there, because the blacktop plant's not open yet. He did send some, bend down that day to finish, you know, to make sure that nothing had come out. I think some had. And as soon as the blacktop plant is open, they will finish it. And that street is actually up, re-milling and filling in a year and a half. It would have already been by now, if you remember the gentleman with the sidewalk issue that then moved afterwards. And then the big issue was which side would the sidewalk go on if we pulled one in, but it seems like since he's moved, that issue's gotten away, so now the road will get paved.
That was what's-his-face worked for Verizon.
But that's what I know about it, is there's something, it's come since I left, or.
I don't know. That's the letter that she's, emailed everybody Thursday.
Constellation of Poles. I didn't, I didn't, I just got an email, and I just.
We got the email too.
Since last Thursday, you talked to Brad and all this happened.
I did it all that day, then it came in Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
She, she, I think she emailed me back, if I remember right, was very happy and said, "Thank you." I didn't know why she'd sent a letter also, so she wasn't happy, but if anyone finds out she's not happy, let me know. Anything else under commissioner reports?
Yeah.
Okay, um, public comment, we actually have four people and you. Where would you start?
Andrew.
So, do you work at 3:30 on for a special meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's also your workshop?
The workshop will follow the special meeting.
Okay. Um, and you're just going to vote on the two, the first two variance applications?
Yes, that's the expectation, that's right.
Um, Jason, are you still planning on bowing out during the budget?
Um, still, I'm still thinking about it, yeah. So, up in the air. So I know it could be like another month, or it could be till September. Really kind of want to pay attention to what goes on with the STR conversation. Because that's the, one of the sole reasons why I'm on. And we, I was anticipating the dialogue to start earlier. But now that, I feel like, now that all everyone's traveling their back, and now it seems like the dialogue's going to start happening much faster. Much more intense, so.
And that's yours?
Yeah. With the presentation, and then it comes to the board.
Okay. And so June 20th at 4:30, you're having a public hearing on the tentative budget as well as mirror, new mirror-like regulations? Is this the speed limit thing?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys have a copy of that? You can send it to me.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. As well.
Actually, it was already in the board packet, but I'm happy to send that to you. It was, it was towards the end of today's board packet.
Oh, okay, well, that'll just stay there.
What did that?
How quick are we? And I got this co- copy of this, when you gave me.
Yeah.
Yep, and is that some, this at this point can go?
That's what I just gave him.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry.
I forgot.
I thought she wanted the um, the speed limit.
Yes, probably, yeah.
Okay, pretty sure.
I was like, I don't remember if anyone got that, but.
She asked for the one to two, and I had extra copies.
Okay, very good. Um, anybody that's with us, um, online, have any questions? Okay, um, if there are no comments to come before us, we need to.
Welcome Mr. Bouton to the, he's on.
Oh, yes.
Welcome to the staff.
We, we look forward to you, um, Mike joining us. Okay, um, if that's the case, then we will go into an executive session for litigation.
Need a motion?
So moved. A second?
By motion.
Second, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Let me stop recording.